All right. Welcome everybody to Thursday, August 6th, meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. In accordance with Executive Order N-2920, the Planning Commission meeting will be held virtually. If you need instructions, go to the county website on the Planning Commission prompt, and it will give you instructions on how to log on, on either your computer or your phone. I'll now call the meeting to order. Would you please join me in the salute to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I have a roll call, please, Laura? Yes.
Alan Bonje.
Present.
Ronnie Caligree.
Present.
Noah Levy.
Here.
Mike Newman.
I am here but barely hearing whoever is saying this.
Peggy O'Neil. So Peggy is here. Brian Mitchell.
Present.
Melanie Mcgaver.
Present.
Thank you, Laura. Any changes to the agenda?
We have no changes to the agenda. There are several supplementals that were emailed out this evening, but there are no changes to the agenda. I just would point out that the project that hills has been recommended to be continued to a date uncertain.
Okay. All right. Now I will open up for public comment. This is for any item that is not on the agenda tonight. So any item you'd like to speak that we are not going to address tonight, feel free now, and I will get over to the attendees. And it appears we have one hand up. Julie Williams. Go ahead, Julie. Are you there, Julie? Oh. You're muted, Julie.
How about now?
Now, now we can hear you.
Thank you. Just want to thank you for the opportunity to attend the meeting this evening. We are the agents for the Ryan family, and we understand we're on the consent agenda. So that's it. If you need anything answered, I can answer them for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Anybody else that would like to speak? Going once, going twice? All right. I'm going to close the public comment, and we are going to go through, as we always do, our consent agenda. There's a lot of items on here, so I will go through each one. And if anybody wants that item pulled, raise your hand, please. So, the first item is the Double G LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permits. Does anybody want that pulled from consent? Seeing none, I'll leave that on. Second item is Highway 36 Homestead LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit. Anybody want that item pulled? Seeing no hands, I will leave that on consent. Item number three, Humboldt Leaf Incorporated Conditional Use Permit. Anybody want that item pulled? Seeing none, leave that on consent. Item number four, Indra Valley Strategic Marketing Group LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit in the Neeland area. Anybody want this item pulled? Seeing none, I'll leave that on consent. Item number five, the Tim and Kathleen Ryan Parcel Map Subdivision and Special Permit in Fieldbrook. Anybody want that item pulled? Seeing none, we will leave that on. Item number six, the Allen and Sharon Parks Final Map Subdivision in the McKinleyville area. Anybody wish to have that item pulled? Seeing none, we will leave that on consent. And the last item on consent is number seven, Gerlitz Parcel Map Subdivision and Special Permit in the Ridgewood Drive area of Cutton. Anybody wish to have that item pulled? Seeing none, we will leave that on consent. So, we have seven items on consent, and all seven of them seem to be good. So, is there any discussion about consent calendar, or do I have a motion? Ah, we have an attendee that has a hand up. I'm not sure. I closed. Yeah, Maple Creek, but.
So, Mr. Chairman, if, if the caller or the attendee is not concerned about the consent calendar, then I would move approval of the consent calendar items, all of them.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to, to the public, and, and there's two attendees, so I'm gonna see what they have to say.
Okay.
Okay.
So now, where the heck, they? Okay. Elizabeth, go ahead and, and speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, super. Okay. Um, well, I just had a question. Um, I'm not quite sure of the process, but um, does it mean that the Maple Creek Investments LLC is, is off the table, or?
No, no, that, that's later in public, or in our next section of items. This is the consent agenda, and it was not on there.
Okay. I, I didn't understand. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess that's, is there another? Jill, go ahead.
Yes, I, I had the same question about that. So we are going to be talking about the Maple Creek Investments. It's not on the consent calendar. So I will wait.
Yes. That'll be the next item that, after we approve the consent calendar, the next item up is that project.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. So seeing no more, I, I'm going to bring this back to the commission, and we had a motion, and I believe we had a second, but I didn't get who the second was.
Yes, I did. Melanie.
Yeah, and just to be super clear, I move approval of all the items on this calendar except for Maple Creek Investments and Adessa Organic.
Fair enough. Is the second fine with that?
Yes.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Laura, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Alan?
Yes.
Ronnie Caligree?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Is that me?
Yes.
Yes, um, I approve.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
And Melanie Mcgaver?
Yes.
Peggy's was. Thank you, Laura. So the motion carries. We will now move to the next item, which is the Maple Creek Investments LLC in the Butler Valley Road, Maple Creek area. I'd ask for a staff report, please.
Chair? Excuse me. Chair?
Yes.
What about the hills? That was a separate, that wasn't on the consent.
The director said it was, was postponed or pulled.
And you do request, we didn't have to make any motion on that?
That would be a question from the director, but I believe, he said indefinite. Do we need to?
It's, it's continued to a date uncertain, and I believe the motion on the consent calendar by Commissioner Levy identified all items.
Except.
Yep.
So, I think it was covered.
Okay. It just wasn't on the consent calendar, on the agenda. I understand. Okay.
Mike, I appreciate, I appreciate you calling that out. You're right.
Keep me straight, guys. All right. So, could we have the staff report on the Maple Creek Investments LLC, please? Do we have a staff report?
Ms. Ayel, I believe your mic is muted.
Chair?
Okay. Yes, Mike.
Bonje?
Yes.
I need to recuse myself on this one, on this item. There's been a, trying to find out from the FPPC on some conflict of interest questions. I happen to carry some insurance for, not the applicants, but for the consultant, and I need to have further review with FPPC. I've talked to counsel, and been advised that I should recuse myself on this item.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
So, somebody going to call me when this is over? I'll leave the meeting?
I don't think there's any reason that.
Yes, yeah, we will. Can you email me?
I will.
I will email you. Unless you want to give me your number right now.
I'll, I'll send it to you straight on the chat, just to you.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Let's get that staff report, then.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Misaiad Ramos, and I will be presenting the facts regarding Maple Creek Investments LLC. This project was not heard by the zoning administrator on July 16th due to public concern. So, the proposed project is a 127,025 square foot full sun outdoor cannabis cultivation in a consolidated location seen on the site where the southern pin is on the aerial, or actually, that's the next slide, excuse me, which you will see on the next slide. The applicant proposes to install four rainwater catchment tanks in an existing flat area and to redevelop an existing wooden shed into a 2,000 square foot ancillary drying and processing facility.
Mr. Ramos?
Ms. Ayel?
Yes.
Are you intending to be screen sharing right now?
I am.
You, you're not?
Okay. Sorry about that.
And could you check your microphone, too, and turn it up a little bit so we can hear you better?
Perhaps. Uh, yes. Uh, am I, am I being heard?
We're hearing you. It's just not real loud.
Okay. Uh, while trying to speak up, is my screen being shared correctly now?
That's better.
Good. Okay, so, I'll start over. All right. So, uh, yeah, my name is Misaiad Ramos, and I will be presenting the facts regarding Maple Creek Investments LLC, a project not heard by the zoning administrator on July 16th due to public concern. The proposed project is for, is a special permit for 127,025 square foot full sun outdoor cannabis cultivation in a consolidated location. The applicant proposes to install four rainwater catchment tanks in an existing flat area and to redevelop an existing wooden shed into a 2,000 square foot ancillary drying and processing facility. Annual irrigation will be approximately 200,000 gallons, the same capacity as the proposed rainwater catchment tanks, and equals approximately 7.4 gallons per square foot per year. Under provisions of the CCLUO that apply to parcels, tankers, or larger, whereby one acre of cultivation may be permitted with a special permit, and the subject property is approximately 42 acres. Power for the ancillary processing facility is to be, is proposed to be PG&E, a 200 amp single-phase drop with a backup generator in case of public service power shut-off events. Here is the project site, seen in the pin to the south. It is at the intersection of Maple Creek and Butler Valley Road. The pin to the north is the location of the proposed drinking and sanitation water source for the project, which is an off-site well on a, on a parcel under common ownership. The proposed use of the well as a domestic water source for onsite personnel does not represent a change in use for the well, as it is currently serving a domicile. The parcel is designated residential agriculture, in which general agriculture is a permitted use. Cannabis is considered an agricultural crop, and water storage infrastructure such as, as is proposed on this parcel is common on agricultural lands. The applicant will improve the intersection of the access driveways to Butler Valley Road to the same pavement type as the county road, which is considered by public works to be a category for roads. The proposed project neither includes nor precludes residential development. Here is an aerial image of the project site as it was prior to abatement in 2019. A penalty has been assessed and is to be paid upon project decision per the director. The proposed cultivation area will be as seen on the western part of this image, and the tanks will go on the northern flat, northeastern flat as seen on this image. And, and no cultivation is proposed outside of the area seen to the west. The project complies with the open space plan as the proposed use is principally permitted in this land use designation. Pertaining to biological resources, while northern spotted owl activity centers are near the cultivation site, with the nearest at .51 miles, the project involves full sun outdoor cultivation and does not propose use of generators as a primary power source. As stated, a 200 amp single-phase PG&E drop is proposed. An ambient noise assessment was performed and found ambient noise levels to be 38 decibels. As an ongoing condition of approval, noise levels cannot exceed 3 decibels over ambient noise levels per the pertinent CCLUO performance standard. Here's the applicant's site plan. The site plan shows outlined in bright green the proposed cultivation area in the bottom center. Seasonal road is proposed to be installed to allow for complete circumvention of the delineated illustrious wetland identified by the applicant's consultant. In the inset is shown the proposed processing facility with ADA parking shown and, as well as a loading area. Also shown in the inset is additional water storage tanks that are ready to be used for fire suppression if necessary, as well as an emergency vehicle turnaround and proposed secure storage. The project site was surveyed for cultural resources, and the survey confirmed that the proposed project would not adversely affect any cultural resources on site. The wooden shed was not considered to be of historical significance. The proposed project does not represent incompatible land uses, given that it is permissible under this land use designation, and the commission has previously approved a conditional use permit for an adjacent property for an outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation. In the environmental review, the following documents were reviewed for compliance, to establish compliance with the CCLUO Standards for Cultivation Activities, as well as to establish consistency with the county's EIR. Public comments received regarding the project included concerns regarding access, pollution, water quality, fire risks, traffic, impact to biological resources, noise and smell impacts to surrounding neighbors, and non-compliance with required findings for approval. Here is a broader aerial of the location of the project site, again at the intersection of Butler Valley and Maple Creek Road. Staff recommends that the planning commission find the project consistent with the addendum to the FPIR adopted for the CCLUO per Section 15164 of CECL guidelines to make required findings for approval of the special permit and to adopt the resolution approving Maple Creek Investments LLC special permit, sorry, subject to the conditions of approval. And that is all.
Do any of the commission have questions for staff? Go ahead, Noah.
I do. Well, I'm asking a question that I already asked Director Ford and got a short answer, but I just wanted to put it on the record. I noticed that in our staff report, there was no reference to any comments received from the Department of Fish and Wildlife in the referral request for this one. I, I asked Mr. Ramos and Director Ford this afternoon if there was anything that we weren't hearing about. I'll let Director Ford speak to that.
To the chair. Thank you, Commissioner Levy. So I, after our conversation today, I was able to talk to a representative of CDFW, and they did briefly look at this project, identified that it is outdoor cultivation, understood that it would not have lights or generators associated with cultivation, and felt that there were not impacts to be concerned about associated with this. So, they did not provide comments.
All right.
Thank you for following up on that. Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions, Noah, or I'll open up to anybody else? Thank you. Melanie, I'll see your hand up. Go ahead, Melanie.
Oh, thank you. Um, I was just wondering, it's kind of along the same lines, whether there was any mention by them of it being close to the so-called Salmon Super Highway, I think it's called. Yeah, Salmon Super Highway, four miles of habitat for threatened cove salmon. It's a tributary, close by, from what I understand.
If that's a question for you to join.
So, through the chair, thank you. They did not provide comments on that and did not express a concern with the proximity of the site to the Mad River.
Okay, thank you. I haven't verified it myself. It was something that someone mentioned to me also, and I just wanted to see if you had heard of it. I haven't been able to find anything on it myself. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I will open this up for public comment, because I believe we will have a few people tonight. So, let's see, that we at least have one attendee, but I'm not seeing a hand up. Maybe I'm not. Julie, go ahead, Julie. Julie, are you there? Now we're getting attendees. So, I guess Julie, maybe we'll come back to you the next, I'm not showing hands by people. I'm just showing that there's five hands up. I don't know. So go ahead, Alex. Or Alex. I don't know what order they're in. It's not showing. You guys just tell me who on. It was showing hands on the attendees, but not. So.
So, if, Mr. Ziegler, can you unmute yourself?
Alec, can you unmute yourself? Go ahead, Alec, if you're there. Let's go on to the next person and then come back around. So, Ryan Shields is the next speaker. Are you there?
Hello, are you receiving me?
We're receiving you now.
Hey, I, my name is Brian Shields, and I'm the project manager for this particular project, and I just wanted to chime in and say I'm here to answer any questions after the public comment period. And I wanted to thank the Planning Commission for holding this forum, as well as county staff for the excellent job they've done in preparing this project thus far. So, I'll turn it back over for the public comment. I just wanted to let everybody know I am here.
All right. Thank you. Jill is the next speaker.
All right. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is actually Skylar Giordano. I'm using my wife's computer, so.
You're chilled us.
I, I am the neighbor directly to the south bordering the parcel in question. And I'm not fundamentally opposed to cannabis, but I am opposed to a non-lived on-site right there on the road. I feel like it's going to have impacts negative to our lifestyle and the community. So those are kind of just broad concerns. The wetland, my well is also directly downhill from this natural wetland called out. So I am curious as to what those impacts of drawing that kind of water will be on my already one gallon, one gallon a minute well. But mainly, I see that the road, the driveway, the proposed access to this grow site originates on my parcel. And I have my title report in front of me and show no easements with the Dunaway's or Maple Creek LLC. So, though, that's a. So though that's, those are my concerns.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Victoria, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, that's a good thing. As a professional Realtor in Havaults, I am often asked what the purpose of property ownership is. And by definition, it means to have quiet enjoyment of one's property, which with the Maple Creek proposed cultivation will be impossible to attain with added traffic, noxious smells, fertilizer leaching into residential water sources, and the Mad River watershed. Surveillance cameras and the hostile environment brought on by large grow operations, not limited to theft, vandalism, illegal drug sales, use, and illegal firearms, not to mention the decline in property values of neighboring properties. This was also demonstrated on the show Murder Mountain, which our county is now known for. Is that what we want our county to be known for? This proposal is not principally permitted and inevitably will damage and inhibit neighboring properties to use their properties within their principally permitted use. For example, if a neighboring property were to have a day camp or a boy scout camp being next to a large federally illegal grow operation not principally permitted, detracts from and impinges upon the rights and established uses of neighboring property owners. Thirdly, there is simply not enough water to go around. The rivers are lower than they've ever been. The proposed catchment system takes groundwater away from neighboring wells and the Mad River watershed and its sensitive ecosystem. It is not an adequate source of water for the proposed cultivation. And as you, somebody had said that it was a residential, what's that, it's residential agricultural. This does not seem like a residential agricultural type of grow. This is more bordering on a commercial grow, which should not be permitted in this area. It's close to a school. It is in the middle of everything, driving. The roads simply cannot handle that as part of the plan that shows that they're going to be trucking in water. And I dare any one of you to drive past the bridges to get to this property on a day that people are going to the river and you can barely fit a bicycle through the, through the traffic. Previous illegal grow operations owned by the same members of Maple Creek LLC has resulted in disruption to Native American burial grounds. And I'm wondering if there's been any substantial true archaeological investment. The part that I read was, did not seem thorough. And of course, the mapped wetlands are absolutely too close to proposed cultivation. There's an issue with the wetlands data in the report done by Tara and Pacific Watershed. It was noted in an extremely dry time of year and is completely inaccurate. And there are also currently property lines in dispute on the subject property proposed for cultivation. The culmination of these faults in Maple Creek LLC proposal is why I strongly oppose
Thank you, Victoria. Next is Elizabeth Forstmann.
Okay, good evening to all of you. I would like to ask if the board, I mean, if the planning commission here has had a chance to read our submitted documents and for the record, would like to submit them for the minutes this evening. There was the, have you seen them?
Yes, we did receive them.
Okay, super. So I don't have to read them tonight for you to, to understand where, where I'm coming from and what I have to say. What I would like to do is point out the discrepancies in tonight's presentation by the planning, the staff report by the planning department. So in the other staff report, it wasn't 200,000 gallons, it was 214, because 14,000 gallons are already on with six plastic tanks sitting there in the intersection of Butler Valley, Maple Creek Road. Another question I would like to know is how many of the planning commission this evening have driven out and seen the, viewed the scene before this meeting? So anyway, there's a discrepancy of 14,000 gallons plus the water that they said for drinking water. That's not what they said in the other staff report. So tonight, we're getting a completely different view. 14,000 gallons of water is enough to live on for the year. And they want to blow it away into the soil with pesticides and fertilizers. So if you read the staff report or the proposal of the fertilizers and the pesticides that are planned to be stored and used into native soils, you will find that it reads like a horror film, something out of Aaron Brockovich. Some of you are old enough to know what, who that is and what Aaron Brockovich had to do to rid the chemicals in the water. So for two years, there was an unpermitted grow on that parcel, the 09 parcel. And that water that they used for those 14,000 gallons drew down from our well that we built in 1989. It impacted us so greatly for those two years that we did not have the same amount of water in June. Then there was July, August, September, October, and until November. So your ordinances, your general plans, everything that I have read supports us, the landowner. And if it is not applied correctly, I only can say that it's going to have to go further because I've read the law and I've read the ordinance and I've read everything that you have put before us. And it supports us, the adjacent landowners. Again, it says there would be six employees in the staff report. Now they say 10. In the, in the report, they call the cabin a shed, which not only shows that they have no, no regard for the history in this area, they have no regard for what is already here. They said no generator, they said yes generator, they said that they could get renewable resources. Now they're saying PG&E. Well, clearly in my document, I outlined how dangerous PG&E has been to the state of California for the last, how many years? Three? Why is that? Because we've been in drought. There is not enough water. There are enough grows right here. We're surrounded by them. One, two, three, no more is enough. 16 miles, they want to truck water. The staff report that we saw tonight, they didn't talk about the portable toilets they want to put on the intersection of Butler Valley, Maple Creek Road. These roads that I have walked and run on for 32 years. And for those two years that they grew, not the amount that they're proposing to grow now, but it smelled all the time, not just when I ran by that parcel and those people who have been abusive, they've trespassed, they've stalked us, and they have threatened to kill my dog, and they have threatened me and my life because my life is with this In January of 2021, on the 26th of January, it will be 33 years that we have lived here. The site plan that they have used goes right through our house. It's not the parcel map that we bought the land with. It's not the line of the boundary that we bought the land with.
No.
Salt. Yeah, I can go on. I've lived here for 33 years. You're gonna cut. I'm sorry, I'm supposed to have three minutes. Okay, public works. They only, they only say the road. Nothing, nothing has been checked off, nothing, nothing has been checked off. So I can write a book now. If you guys aren't going to listen to me, that's fine. But I will tell you, attachment five has nothing checked off except for, for the Division of Environmental Health for the portable toilets. Okay? And Department of Fish and Wildlife has not had any comment, not to me and not to you. Division of Water Rights, it has not been checked off. The district attorney, not checked off. Agricultural Commission, not checked off. Maple Creek School, not checked off. Neeland Volunteer Fire Department, not checked off. For, for a plethora, a multitude, I haven't even begun to write. I only had a month and you have my two documents to go by, but I haven't stopped yet. This is beyond feasible, it's beyond sustainable.
Okay, you're gonna have to wrap it up.
Okay, we're, and I ask you to deny this permit to the Maple Creek Investments LLC. Their apparatus of surveillance and their mentality and what they do and the pollution, it's too much.
Hey, thank you very much. You're gonna have to wrap it up. Next speaker, please. Alec, you're next.
All right, and thank you for your opportunity to speak tonight. My apologies.
Thank you. We lost you.
Hello? Hello?
We hear you now.
Okay. My apologies for technical difficulties here and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm going to jump right in and say that my biggest concerns, and echoed by most of the folks that have spoke tonight, would be water use, particularly pertaining to calculations on the amount of water that will be required by this project in order for cultivations to proceed throughout the year. I would say that they are nebulous. There are multiple mentions, both in the WRPP, in the actual plan submitted by applicants, and in staff's synopsis for the commission that seems like guesswork at best. You know, it's not well defined. I would say that the number that they have put down for the required water for their cultivation operation is not well defined. I didn't see any logs, at least in my review, that really proved that that was what they, what they would require for it. And additionally to that, I don't see any provisions in the plan mentioned anywhere for whether there is insufficient water provided through the water catchment system during a particular grow cycle. You know, if there's not enough rain, they're not going to have water cached. What's going to be their source of water then? I don't see any provisions for trucking in water, which would be my guess is the next logical step for them. There's no accounting for additional traffic or load on the road that would be required by trucking water, things of that nature. Would they allow plants to die off should not, no water be available? Things that are not accounted for, addressing the plan that I think are critical for something of this scale that's already getting this much blowback from the community already. I would say additionally, one of the water concerns impacts to a massive reduction in available water recharge for groundwater, water runoff to streams, rivers, although they may be a little bit further away. We all know that those hydrology systems are extremely connected on many levels and you're talking, you're only less than a mile away from the river. The fact that that's not of more concern raises a red flag for me. Where the water will be cached according to the site map is significantly upslope of the map's wetlands on the parcel. That's water that's being taken away from those wetlands. Those are very important pieces of environmental resource for us in that area. I don't see any discussion for what would happen if that water is taken away, nor do I see any discussion about what would happen if the catchment system fails. Certainly not if there's a catastrophic failure of any water storage, anything that would protect either the crop or the road or anything downslope of those catchment tanks is not addressed. I think that's an important security concern, not only for people around, but for the site itself. The wetland delineation mapping, I would, I think is a little deficient. I think that the WRPP and the wetland delineation map conflict in a lot of their ideas about how much water present there. They're formed at very dry points of the year. It's explicitly stated, particularly in the wetland delineation mapping, that it was, that their initial investigation was performed at an exceptionally dry time of year. I believe it was the beginning of October in a historical drought year. Also something of concern with what the assumptions about this project are being based upon. I also have concerns about the number of changes over the last few, I guess, two months since this project actually came into public view about the source of water, how much water would be required, and how the water would be treated and applied to the crop. It doesn't seem, and I understand applicant is probably trying to respond to questions from staff, from public, from public input, the fact that it was not a hard number from the beginning that has changed so much back and forth and so many unreliable numbers and conflicting numbers have been provided also raises a really big red flag about whether the water that they're proposing for this project is going to be sufficient. I do think there are a lot of other very serious issues. I think that a lack of input from other regulatory agencies also is concerning. I would echo commissioner's comments on that. Just because they declined to make a comment over the phone to John Ford, with all respect, on the day of this meeting does not mean that they have adequately vetted this project, nor been able to respond to the particulars of a report or of a project that admittedly has been changing on a daily basis based on the, on the materials that we're receiving as the public. I do think that there are threats to environmental resources, protected wildlife, much of elk or Maple Creek in that area is an elk migration quarter. They mob all over the place, up below the river, up above the river, on both sides of the road.
Wrap up, Alec.
Oh, excuse me, sure. And thank, I would say that the cumulative effects of this project, taken as a whole, the cumulative effect of the community concern about this project and the uncertainty with the ways that it's moving forward, even if taken by themselves are not enough to disprove this project or at the very least to push it, cumulatively would be grounds for the commission to deny, if not push, the project. Thank you for your time and appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Shirley Williams? Julie Williams, sorry. Julie, go ahead. Julie, are you there? We'll go on to the next speaker and then come back. Judy, are you there?
Hi, can you hear us?
Yes.
Hi. We're neighbors across the river and we have been there for 30 years. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
And we have, we have significant concerns from multiple perspectives. You know, just the, the water is the life for everybody that lives out there. And, but not only that, the water of the Mad River is critical to the whole Humboldt County community. And I feel like that it's really, really important that the, that the Humboldt County planning really look as a whole at the community, the cumulative effects of all of these different grows that are happening up and down the Mad River. And, and really what the impact of it is to our, our main source of water. And so I think that's really important because each, every time you have one of these come presented before you, there, it's just one of a whole series of. And what has happened is over the 30 years we have been there, we have, we have purchased this property in 1989. And what has happened is, over the 30 years we have been there, we have, we have purchased this property in 1989. And, and what, for years Humboldt County has been a bastion of organic farming and non, and very against monocultural crops. You know, that was one of the big mainstays of it. And now it's, what has, is ultimately happening is there's, there, it's becoming a monocultural crop, up and down the river and throughout Humboldt County. And I think, I think the cumulative impacts are important, that we really look at that carefully. But also, in addition to that, there are safety issues. When you start having people from out of the area and it become non-owner occupied and they're non-residential, it's a whole different, it's a whole different impact onto the community. And then you're gonna have transient workers occurring up in, that are just coming at certain times of the year and increasing the load, load on the road, which is not a safe road to begin with. And, and it's, it's definitely a concern and safety is a definite concern. We're out there, you know, there's, there's people that we don't know. And, and it's just, there's definitely safety concerns. And particularly if you're going into a project to begin with, that's requiring video surveillance for, and it already has safety concerns about what's, what is there. Also, you know, I really, I think we need to look at the zoning of this. And I think also the, the fact that there is a wetlands needs to be really looked at carefully. Because just what, what you can't see from the overview of that map is that, is that, that it's a very steep down to the river, across the road, down the river, right directly into the Mad River. And, and it's, it's very shallow, the, the water, the groundwater table is very shallow there. And, and there's, there's quite a bit of, it's very, it drains right into, into the river. So there's, there's multiple concerns that we're, we're concerned about and we, and we, I'm not so great at articulating here, but if we could, you know, we have presented some, some documents of concerns, but I really think we need to look at what we're doing.
You're gonna have to wrap it up, Judy, please.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, thank you. I'm trying to be lenient on the time, but I can't let you go too long over. Okay, next caller, please. Oh, I guess that's it. I apologize, but I can't see who's calling in tonight for some reason. It's not showing up, so they're telling me. So with no more public, I will close the public comment and I will bring it back to the commission for deliberation. Ronnie, go ahead.
Yeah, I appreciate a, a lot of the passionate comments that we heard tonight. And I super appreciate Noah's question in the beginning. And I really admire Director Ford for reaching out to Fish and Game to try to get an answer to the question regarding their concerns. Now, having said all that, my bigger concern is I can't, I can't feel good about just recommending approval for this without a more thorough vetting by Fish and Wildlife because of the anadromous and the water issues. I do, I'm not trying to disparage anything that Director Ford has done or even their reply back, but you know, a couple-minute conversation really doesn't satisfy that requirement in my mind. And, and the water use and the Maple Creek drainage into the Mad River. And, and then also another issue was the abatement. This property, it sounds like, according to Planner Ramos, this property was abated to, a couple of years ago. So these neighbors have been dealing with some of this, these problems and you can hear it in their voices, in their public comment. You know, now they're, this property owner is trying to get legal and that's the way it should go. But I would like an answer or a comment from Fish and Wildlife of a more thorough degree. And that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. Anybody else?
I have a question of staff. There was an allegation by one of the speakers that there was a disturbance of burial sites that were either on or near that site. And I'm curious as to what tribe was notified in the cultural report for this project.
We'll have them comment at the end on, unless you want to comment about it now.
Ms. Yell, do you have that record in front of you?
Yeah, let me.
No, no sound.
The jurisdictional tribes are the Blue Lake Rancheria and the Bear.
You, you just, to mute again.
I said the jurisdictional tribes are the Blue Lake Rancheria and the Bear River.
So did you find in the record any, that there were burial sites there? Or is that just something that's being alleged? Is there any knowledge of that?
So let me just try to explain the process that we go through a little bit here, Ms. Ramos. Is that when we receive the application, we have agreements with all the tribes. And we circulate the, the plan to the tribes for their review. And one of the things, as you're aware, is that the ordinance requires that there be no cultivation in 600 feet of a tribal cultural resource. So that allows the tribes to indicate whether or not they're concerned with something that's on the site. And if there is something on the site, there is the ability to say, that can't happen here. We really don't provide a public report when there has been an archaeological study done because we want to respect the privacy and integrity of that information. And so an archaeological report was done on the site. I assume that it was asked for by the tribe. It's very common for the Bear River Band of the Run, Bear Rancheria Tribal Historic Preservation Officer to ask for a cultural analysis. And so I did note, notice in the file when I was looking at it, that there is such a report in the file. I did not read it to see whether or not there had been a disturbance or not, but based upon the conditions of what we're presenting. I, would, Mr. Ramos, is, is there anything to indicate that there was a violation of a historic?
I believe my takeaway from the report is that the results of the survey for cultural artifacts on site was negative, that there were not artifacts that were going to be adversely affected by the proposed development.
Through the chair, I'd like to just add, I'm actually looking at the archaeological study right now that was prepared by Jamie Roscoe. And it did not identify any archaeological sites or resources on the property. They, both the Bear River Band's Tipo and the Blue Lake Rancheria Tipo did respond that they did not have any concerns and that they had read the report.
Thank you. Okay, does that answer your question, Peggy? All right, we'll move on. Noah, your hands up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So yeah, I do have a couple of follow-up questions for the staff, perhaps for the applicant. But first of all, I just wanna acknowledge that, you know, we heard some, some very heartfelt testimony from some of the neighbors and residents of the Maple Creek area. I personally am very, very fond of the area around this property. I'm not unfamiliar with it. My kids have played out in the Maple Creek Elementary School playground many times. I've been to the Maple Creek Swimming Hole at the Mad River more times than I can count. And to be totally honest, I, I would like to find some objective reasons why this shouldn't go through. And I'm not saying that there aren't any. But on the other hand, what I see here is a few things that, that I would consider to be a pretty good marker of a clean and low-impact project in that they're using on-grid PG&E power. And I mean, you can't fault them from using PG&E power. I mean, the PG&E lines are already there. So yeah, maybe there's a fire risk associated with power lines, but it's a hell of a lot better than generators in my book. From what I understand, and I do want to confirm this, they're, they're entirely planning to use rainwater catchment for their irrigation. There's a well involved, but as I understand it, the well is only to be drawn upon for green water to supply the employees. You know, it, it's full sun outdoor in the ground. I mean, these are, these are three or four different things that we kind of want to see when we're talking about low-impact grows. Now, the big thing that I'm concerned about here, and, and I don't feel like this was fully addressed in the staff report, so I'd kind of like to ask specifically about this. Well, first of all, am I correct that, that the irrigation water is entirely to be used for rainwater catchment? Because if that's true, you know, rainwater catchment doesn't deprive Maple Creek of water. It doesn't. You know, it, it doesn't deprive any of the neighbors of water. So much more water falls in rain than can be captured that cat, that catchment is the least impactful way that you can gather your water. That, that I know, if that's true, that that's what they're doing. But I'm, what I'm not so sure about is the whole question of the abatement order. If, what I don't like about this project is a sense that we might be rewarding past bad behavior. You know, i- if, if, you know, there's a lot of antipathy towards this project. And I, I honestly tend to see projects that have a huge amount of neighbor antipathy as having something wrong with them, if only in that the applicants didn't bother to explain to the neighbors what they were doing and why it wouldn't cause these problems. So all of what I've said is sort of what, what I see as having checked the right boxes, but I'm still not convinced that this is a good project because I'm concerned about the whole history of abatements for past violations. And I'm not so sure that, that past violators should get such an easy pass to just reapply and do it better the second time. So I guess, there's a couple of questions there about the water, where it's coming from, and what is the history of violations that led to the abatement order? Thanks.
Melanie, I see you have your hand up. Oh, yeah, why don't we go ahead and we'll answer them as we go. That way it's fresh on their minds. Go ahead.
Ms. Yell, are you gonna answer the water question?
Yes, so yeah, the proposed irrigation water source is to be solely from 450,000 gallons engineered rainwater catchment tanks without any surface water divergence.
Chair, I do want to add, before Director Ford speaks of abatement, I did just want to add that we are proposing a condition of approval that the irrigation tanks be metered so that we can ensure that they have enough water for their irrigation, sorry, for their cultivation. And the question did come up, what would happen if they do not have enough water that they've collected? The county would work with them to reduce the cultivation area so that they do not have to rely on anything other than that rainwater catchment.
So there's no provision for trucking water, just to be clear. That's not allowed?
Not for irrigation.
Right.
Correct, and that, the ordinance would not allow or authorize that.
So relative to the abatement, I, I actually don't remember this one. Ms. Yell, do you recall?
Basically, I think the only record I can find regarding it is that for a settlement meeting with yourself and the applicant, a fine was to be assessed upon the decision being made for the project by the relevant hearing body.
That's, that's what I want to make sure of, thank you, is that this is not, was not an abatement in terms of a code enforcement action. This was a situation where they were cultivating before they had their permit. And it was a circumstance where there was existing cultivation on the site. There was some reason for some misunderstanding. And so we, I allowed them to pay their fine upon approval of the project rather than normally what we do when a applicant is in violation or we assess or I assess a penalty. That needs to be paid before we continue processing the, the permit. So, and let me say that unfortunately, it is not uncommon enough for there to be violations associated with permits. And so I wouldn't want to single this particular applicant out because if we began to take detrimental action because of a violation, that would significantly change how we deal with many, many, many permits.
I have a question or a follow-up question, Director Ford.
Go ahead.
So what you said just there confused me because I thought this was coming in under new cultivation, not existing. And the SEQA exemption that we're using is not existing facilities. So can you describe a little bit more about how much of this project is existing and how much of it is new? And then why are there considered violations if it would be pre-existing cultivation?
So, sure, thank you for the clarification. There was pre-existing cultivation on this. They qualify for the amount of cultivation as new. And so they're just simply applying for new to make it more simple. There, there was historic cultivation on the property. The, the fine was related to the fact that they were cultivating without having permits.
So they didn't start cultivating after the first ordinance was put in effect? This is something that would have allowed them to apply for existing cultivation?
This is for new. That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Did I answer your questions? I'll move on to the next. There, Melanie?
Yes, hi, thank you. I just wanted to say that I also agree that the, the water usage seems reasonable or even beyond reasonable. I would still love to see what, I'm, I'm very happy the planning department did move to start putting the water usage in and, you know, in terms of the actual values. I would still love to see a reference point even in there for the public, just, just so it's really clear. This is above or below the average water use for this type of site. But in any case, I've, I've read through it and I'm satisfied. So I don't really see, likewise, I don't really see anything that stands out that would, you know, have us not approve the project. You know, there's, there's not going to be light pollution. And so on, the only, the only possible effect that I see is traffic. And so, and I don't really think it is significant, but I, I did have a question because it was brought up several times that maybe would satisfy some of the public. Was the traffic analysis done on the basis of a year or on the basis of a month? And was it an average or, or was it a mode? What type of metric? What type of metric was used for that? Because as we know, there is a fair bit of traffic already in that area in the summer. So that's the only question I had and a couple of comments. Thank you.
Do you want to respond to that? So in response to the traffic analysis, the way traffic is evaluated up until, as you're aware, January 1st or July 1st of this year is through a level of service standards. And when the ordinances 1.0 and 2.0 were adopted, there were no roadways that were identified as being within deteriorated or failing condition. So adding traffic to these roadways, while it may be something that the public doesn't like, it doesn't so add traffic to a road that additional improvements would be needed that would require additional work to widen or improve the facilities. And that is what we found here, is that this project is consistent with previous environmental work and doesn't change any of those assumptions.
Thank you for that clarification.
Sorry about that, I haven't spoke for so long, I forgot I was muted. We already dealt with the road issue, so I'm not going to bring that up, but I'm going to bring up a couple of other issues that, one of them got brought up by a couple of the speakers, and I think it's been discussed a little bit amongst the commission as well, and that's the cumulative effects. I think, you know, just tonight, we have two projects that are in this area. I know we've approved one other at least, and I hear about others that are coming. So I think we really need to think about what all these add up to be because, you know, I've lived here all my life and there used to be a salmon run in the madden. In fact, there was a good salmon run in the madden. There's no salmon run in the madden anymore. You know, Steelhead's still pretty good, but salmon is almost gone. It's bad. And the whole push for doing these, this second point, the whole push for doing these cannabis ordinances was to get the grows out of the hills. Well, we're not doing a very good job of that. We've, we just keep allowing them out in the hills. And I think this is a good place to start on looking at getting them where we said we were going to get them. And that was out of the camp, out in the hills and off the tributary roads and in the more sensitive habitats and get them in closer where you don't have the traffic issues and the water issues. And so that would be where I see myself heading. And, you know, it seems like a good, a lot of things seem good about this project, the way they're doing the water catchment and all. But, you know, not too long ago, we had a really good project before us that had a lot of good things, the wind project. And we said that that was a really good project too, but it just wasn't the right place to do it. And, you know, the right place to be doing this is not up in the hills. So you're going to see me voting against this project because we need to get them out of the hills. That's all I have to say. Any other commissioners that want to speak before I bring it back for a vote? Seeing none, I will close the discussion and bring it back to the commission to vote on this issue. Yeah, we haven't, so. Anyone?
Sorry, I, hey, can you hear me? This is Noah. I'm just wanting to chime in to say that I'm persuaded by what Chair Banjo just said. You know, this is being classified as a new project. I understand that it was an existing project and that there's a history of abatement and so forth. And as I understand it, that, they were led to reapply as a new project because of, you know, certain advantages that would come from doing it that way rather than doing it as existing. Because I guess you could expand what you had before because of the zoning and what it allowed. But I just want to say, and I feel extremely torn on this, but I kind of feel like I want to treat this one a little differently. If it was an existing project that was being cleaned up and remediated and made more environmentally friendly, and if that's what the purpose of it was, I would be inclined to view it a little bit more kindly. I will totally say, and I have said, that there's a lot of things about this project that are doing it the right way. They're doing it the right way with water, as far as I'm concerned. They're doing it the right way with growing it outside. But there's something that doesn't sit right with me about this, and that has something to do with the fact that I see no evidence in the record that they even tried to communicate with the neighbors about what they were doing, about how what they are proposing to do is not going to bring criminals and dogs and, you know, all kinds of bad stuff. I mean, I will say, I've been out there at the swimming hole. Like, there's no way this grow is going to bring more traffic in the summer than that swimming hole. It's a fucking amazing swimming hole. Sorry. It's a great swimming hole, a lot of traffic, a lot of people come out there. There's no way that this grow is going to cause that kind of impact, but there's something that doesn't sit right about it. And again, I would view it a little differently if they were just taking an existing grow, cleaning it up, and classifying it as existing. But it's not, it's a new, it's a new project. So despite all the things that they're doing right, I don't know that I can support it. I just wanted to go on the record about that.
Melanie has her hand up.
Thank you, Chair. I just, since we're discussing this, I'd like to say that I do take cumulative effects very seriously. And cumulative impacts is one of the exceptions to SEQA exemption. On the other hand, the planning department knows this and, you know, takes this into consideration in their work. And so I don't see that, at least yet. One of the callers said, oh, do we want this to be what our county is known for? And, you know, for better or for worse, it is what it is known for. And the pursuit of, you know, the appellation and the tower wall for a cannabis is going to be what maybe saves the economy here in this county. So, I mean, there are multiple considerations. But what it comes down to for me is not really what I personally think. It's whether everything has been satisfied. At, you know, if there's any gray areas even. You know, that's what we look for in terms of the SEQA, in terms of the ordinances, and there really isn't. I mean, you know, we're not allowed to take into consideration their rude behavior if indeed it existed or communication with the neighbors or dogs or any of those things, really. And in this particular case, I don't even see that this project is at all close to not satisfying any of the requirements legally. And indeed, if it were to be, if we, you know, didn't approve it, I'm sure it would just be a long litigation, which ultimately doesn't really improve our, what we have going on at the county level anyway. So I'm still in favor of approving this project. Thanks.
Melanie, I see Ronnie has her hand up.
Yeah, just really quickly, Alan and Noah articulated, I guess what I was kind of trying to say earlier and not as well. But Maple Creek is a very special place. I won't throw out the F-bomb like somebody did. And we got to do it right. And I, it's not sitting right with me, so I can't, I'm not supporting it.
Thank you, Ronnie. I'm not seeing, oh, wait, I think those are the same hands up. So I'm not seeing any more hands from the commission. And the director made a point to me just a second ago that the applicant didn't get to speak. The representative for the applicant did, but if the applicant would like to speak, I will open it back up just for the applicant. I just assumed that the representative was speaking for the applicant, but I will give that option. So go ahead if you would like.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, my name is Rob Dunaway. I would like to respond to some of the comments. Thank you for the opportunity and also thank you for a detailed overview of this project. What hasn't been talked about by the commenters is the fact that our family has owned property of Maple Creek since the 60s, and we've been visiting the area since the 50s. So we're now in our fourth generation of owning property up there, and we own roughly 1,000 acres. We're not a 40-acre parcel holder. We're a good-sized landowner up there. We have a sustaining cut timber farm plan. We're managing our land with best practices and have been doing so for well over 50 years. I would also note that one of the commissioners was wondering about the relationship between the families. And without going into a lot of detail, I would note that four or five of the commenters are all from one family. They happen to be adjacent to our property. And there was a parcel line dispute because they did not obtain a land survey when they purchased their property. In order to establish a fixed and recorded parcel line, we had to enter into litigation with them. And as you probably can tell from some of the passion involved, our family won that parcel line dispute. And I think there's a little bit of emotion tied up in that, rather than focusing on the merits of the project and the criteria thresholds that by all accounts have been met and exceeded. This has been a three-year process. You know, everything that the county has asked, we have done. Everything that we thought was best practices for the project has been implemented. We've done everything asked under the ordinances and pursuant to the county. And as I say, this was not a short review process, a undetailed process. Director Ford's department is on this stuff. They know this forwards and backwards, and that's why it takes three years to put a good project together. So I just wanted to point out some of the background there. The last thing is that one of the first commenters, speakers, I believe is the grow operation that is already approved just to the south of our parcel. So, you know, there are approved grows in this exact area, and they went through the same difficult review process that we've gone through, and they were approved. So with that said, if any of the commissioners have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Or? Anybody have a question?
Or our project manager would be happy to answer them, whichever is more efficient.
Any questions from the commissioners? Seeing none, we will leave it at that. Thank you for your comments. I will now bring this back to the commission for deliberation. Anybody want to start it off?
Well, I, perhaps we weren't already there, I think we were though.
I think we were, but we, somebody to make a motion. Don't everybody jump at once.
I guess I'll give it a shot, then. I'll motion to approve the Maple Creek Investments LLC special permit, record number PLN 2018-15197, APN 315011009, Butler Valley Road. And, yeah, that's it.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I would second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion about the motion? Not, I will call for the vote. Laura, please go call.
Alan Bonjol?
No.
Ronnie Pellegrini?
No.
Noah Levy?
No.
Mike Nixon? Upstate. Peggy O'Neill?
No.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie McAver?
Yes.
So the motion did not pass. So now we need to have somebody make a motion that will pass. I know that sounds strange, but we've did this before. So would anybody like to make a motion denying the project?
If, if, if I?
Go ahead, Director.
One of the options could be is to continue it and with the direction to staff to bring back the resolution comprising the planning commission's reasons for taking that action. I would prefer to do that rather, if that is a motion, prefer to do that rather than trying to put something together here tonight.
We can do that, it seems like it's pretty straightforward, though we just need a motion denying the project. So it's pretty straightforward if somebody wants to do that, or we can do what the director said and have him bring it back. It's up to you guys.
Make a motion to deny the project.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to deny the project. Any discussion about this? Seeing none, I will call for the vote, Laura.
Alan Bonjol? Ronnie Pellegrini?
Yes.
Noah Levy? Peggy O'Neill?
Yes.
Ryan Mitchell?
No.
Melanie McAver?
No. And is it just me, or is there some kind of speaker on where everyone sounds like they're shouting into Mystery Science Theater?
You're right about that noise, Melanie.
Oh, good, it's not on my end.
Yeah, no. And with that, the motion carried with a vote of four to two. So. So usually about seven o'clock, we take a break. So I'm going to suggest we take a small break, about ten minutes right now, and we'll come back and get the last, um, issues taken care of. Thank you. Are we live? Welcome, everybody, back to the Planning Commission meeting. Mike, are you with us now?
I am. I am here.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
All right, so the next items we have to have this together is the Adessa Organic LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Maple Creek area. And I will take a staff report, please.
Thank you, members of the commission. My name's Cliff Johnson with the Planning and Building Department. Give me just one second to share my screen here. And should be up. So, excuse me, just let me know if you are not seeing the screen that I'm sharing. Uh, so as you mentioned, this is for what's called the Adessa Organic Project, which is a series of four conditional use permits for approximately eighty-six thousand four hundred square feet of new mixed light cultivation in the Maple Creek area. The, uh, project is proposed to, um, excuse me here. Having a few technical difficulties. Okay. So, uh, again, eighty-six thousand four hundred square feet of new mixed light cannabis that would occur in, uh, two large greenhouses of approximately one acre each that would be equipped with automatic light curtains. Drying is proposed onsite in an existing barn structure. There would be no processing other than drying and bucking on the, uh, proposed as part of the project. There would be a maximum of twenty employees required for their operational needs, and that's at the peak, uh, time. Uh, power is proposed to be provided by generators and by solar power, by a mixture of the two. And irrigation is from, uh, rainwater catchment. They are proposing to have approximately four million three hundred and thirty-three thousand gallons of rainwater catchment, water that would be onsite. The irrigation itself is approxi-, or sorry, the cultivation itself would require approximately one point eight million gallons per year, which works out to approximately twenty-one point five, um, gallons per square foot. So this slide here shows the location of the Adessa Project Site. That's approximately eight miles south of the intersection of Butler Valley Road with Maple Creek Road. This slide here is showing the, um, access to the, to the site from the intersection of Butler Valley Road and Maple Creek. Um, when we get here, the red is indicating the private access drive that crosses one property to get onto the, the subject property. Want to show you a close up here of the proposed access drive. It's an existing, uh, access drive that would be improved to meet commercial access standards. There will be a number of, uh, culverts and, um, stream crossings that will be required to be improved. It does cross five streams and there will be one new stream crossing that's proposed. Uh, this slide here is also showing the, a close up of the area that's proposed for development. You can see the Adessa Project Site itself marked there with the pin. That's where the two large greenhouses would go. Uh, just north of that would be where they are proposing to construct solar arrays to provide solar power to the property. In the middle is two existing agricultural structures. They are proposing to, uh, to use those for both the drying of the cannabis and also for storage of various equipment related to the operation. And then to the east is the proposed primary irrigation pond. This slide is showing a site plan of the area. You can see, uh, the proposed pond, the proposed two greenhouses, which basically would be gutter connect greenhouses, as I mentioned previously, with automatic, uh, blackout curtains. And then, uh, re, uh, I should say retrofitting the existing buildings to be used for the drying, uh, storage, and then a proposed new ADA bathroom. The county circulated an initial study and mitigated negative declaration on July first of this year. The comment period ended on August first. The IS MND identified twenty-two mitigation measures that were necessary to reduce the project impacts to a less than significant level. These include requirement for light pollution prevention plan for all outdoor and security lighting, mitigation for any timber removed for the access road construction. Timber would be replaced at a two to one ratio, but there is the requirement that no trees over twelve inches in diameter would be removed. There's a mitigation added to limit the construction period to avoid impacts to northern spotted owl and other raptors. Uh, in order to mitigate for some of the construction or improvements to the access drive, uh, we would be requiring replacement at a three to one ratio for any riparian vegetation that is disturbed. Uh, it appears that there would be at most three thousand square feet of riparian vegetation that would be disturbed in the worst case scenario. So that would be mitigated for at a three to one ratio with riparian vegetation to be, um, improved and developed on the site. The vegeta-, vegetation clearing necessary for the project would be required to occur outside of the nesting season or to complete, um, pre-vegetation clearing nesting bird surveys to prevent disturbance of active nests. That includes a requirement to ensure that grasshopper sparrow nests are not disturbed. A sensitive archaeological site was identified on the property and mitigation does involve requiring a monitor onsite during specific construction activity. The Bear River, um, Tribal Historic Preservation Officer was involved in the development of this mitigation and, and has found that this would be suitable for their needs. The county has also added a mitigation that would require eighty percent of all of the electrical needs to be generated by solar or other renewable power. There is a requirement for low impact design improvements to detain all stormwater runoff onsite and for an engineer to develop a spill prevention control plan and to implement all of those during the project operations. Lastly, for noise, there is mitigation that includes a requirement to construction, construct an eight foot tall block wall to attenuate noise from generators and air conditioning units. And to ensure that during operation, all noise is, uh, from the operation does not exceed fifty decibels at one hundred feet or at the edge of the forest habitat, whatever is nearest. As a result of the public notice and the circulation of the environmental document, we did receive comments from neighbors and then from two agencies, one, the Autobom Society, who expressed concern about traffic and impact to biological resources. And the California Highway Patrol, who expressed concern about the, um, the road access and the safety of adding additional traffic to Maple Creek Road. Um, neighbors did express concern about traffic, water quality, pollution from the proposed, um, cultivation, the risk of additional fire, um, happening from the project. And were concerned about noise. As I mentioned before, the, the twenty-two mitigation measures that are implemented in the initial study and mitigated negative declaration, staff does believe that those, uh, concerns can be adequately addressed. This, um, gives you an overview of basically where the project is. It's eight miles south, uh, southeast, I should say, of the Maple Creek Bridge, which is where Butler Valley and Maple Creek Road connect. There have been a, a few commercial cannabis applications that have been applied for in this area, but none have been approved so far in this particular portion of Maple Creek. Um, there have been concerns raised by some members of the public regarding the potential of new cannabis applications to disrupt, uh, disrupt the incredibly high habitat values of the area and the overall scenic and rural quality of life. Staff does believe that the project's been designed to minimize the impacts. Um, this includes the use of a van pool, which would pick up employees at their place of residence every day and drive them to the project site. The project, uh, the initial study found that there would be approximately ten average daily trips, uh, per day as a result of this project. Uh, so again, staff believes that those impacts have been fully addressed. Nonetheless, we do believe the planning commission should consider whether this portion of Maple Creek, uh, in particular with its historically low density and passive agricultural uses, is appropriate for permitting of a more intensive agricultural operations such as this. Uh, it is staff's recommendation in the staff report to adopt the mitigated negative declaration, to make the findings for approval of the conditional use permits and to adopt the resolution approving the proposed project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for staff at this time? Seeing none, I will open it up for public comment then. And it looks like, hmm? Looks like we have two. The first one is Victoria. Go ahead. Victoria, are you there? Uh, let's move on to the second call. Susan, are you there?
Oh.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Oh, Victoria, so go ahead, Victoria, and then we'll get to Susan.
Uh, yep, I just kind of the same as I opposed the last one. I just, I think that, um, one of the commissioners had commented earlier that, um, yes, it is, Humboldt County is known for this, as we can tell on every street corner that we drive by in Eureka and Arcata with all of the cannabis places to purchase cannabis and, and the products and the calls that I get on a daily basis from everybody outside of the county, but is that the only way that we can make money in this county? Um, we have so many more beautiful resources that we can, we can attain a different level instead of the level that comes with, with cannabis growth. So, um, but all of the same things kind of apply with this one. I haven't looked at this one as closely. But again, any, any sort of, we just don't have enough water. We just don't, do not have enough water. So that's as much as I can say on that.
Thank you, Peter. Uh, Susan? Are you there, Susan? Okay, is there anybody else? Uh, Ron, you're up.
Yes, sir. Yeah. Uh, thank you for being here and, and hearing our concerns. My name's Ron Wilson and I am part owner of the property directly downhill from this project. And I do have concerns about runoff that even though the design looks pretty, pretty complete and, and on paper it works fine, it's still a creek, Cowan Creek runs right through the heart of this project. And, uh, we've had, uh, senior water rights for years and years and years for our cattle. And, uh, and that is vital resource to our, our operations. And anything that might happen that would violate that would harm us greatly. The other issue is, is fire. We are kind of what you might say on the downwind side during the hot summer months. And, uh, there is no communications out there, uh, it's out of cell phone range unless that's taken care of. Uh, even summoning any sort of help should a, a, uh, uh, problem happen is very damaging to us. And, uh, and there's, doesn't seem to be any available recourse that, and there's nothing in the plan that says how we would be, our interests would be protected. It's a corporation that can fold up. There's a lot of additional costs in the, in the solar and the, and the transportation that the likelihood if this fails, uh, it's a corporation and file bankruptcy and be gone. They don't even own the, the business doesn't appear. They own the property. And so, uh, I just don't see it being a good idea. It'd be fascinating to see if it works, but I don't have a lot of confidence in all the engineering and the paperwork when they can't even seem to get the location of a property line right. And the setbacks are legal maybe, but they're much, much closer than, uh, uh, there's about a two hundred foot error there. And, uh, I, I'd just like it not to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? It appears that that is our last caller. Uh, would the applicant like to, uh, address the commission? Go ahead, Laura.
Hi, uh, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Um, thank you so much for hearing, uh, hearing our application today. Um, I wanted to address the concerns from the public comments. Um, you know, for one, when Victoria is talking about resources to attain from Humboldt, Humboldt County, I think we should be kind of proud of what we're doing here and like we're leading not only the nation, but the world in something that could potentially be an entirely new way to agriculture. And I think that with all of the regulations that the ordinance proposes and the state of California is looking at, we're actually removing those problems by regulating this industry. We're removing the handguns and the, um, you know, illegal chemicals and the spills. Like we're actually going in and taking care of the problems. Um, and this is a new grow, so we have an opportunity to do everything right from the start, which I'm very keen on doing that. Um, in regards to Ron's comments, I really appreciate that his family has been there a long time. But from my understanding, none of these concerns were an issue when they applied for permits. And until very recently, they were in the application process. And in terms of being a corporation, yes, it is an LLC. I am the only owner. I also live on the adjacent property. I'm very young. I intend to live, you know, God willing, I intend to spend a lot of my life here and like live here and I take care of the property. And, uh, we're members of the community. I'm on the school board from Maple Creek. Like I'm trying to make a life here. This isn't a three or five year exit plan for me. I want to do this, you know, ideally forever, and I want to be a good steward to the land because I'm living here and I want to see it, you know, being taken care of. Because realistically, if people like me, someone who's young and motivated and like wants to stay here and be a part of the community, don't move in, then the other people that end up buying places like this are loggers, which, you know, I've seen all the clear cutting going on in Maple Creek. I can't in my heart like believe that clear cutting hundreds of acres is any better than growing two acres of cannabis in the same place year after year. Um, and, you know, I've, I've, I've had cattle and other animals grazing on my property and nothing is without fault. Cattle that roam free like also trample the streams. And we've gone through extensive stringent analysis and preparations and engineering to make sure that the creeks and the streams are getting protected beyond what they are now and that they won't be trampled, that they won't be, you know, releasing sediment into the waterways because I live here and I really care because I'm going to be here for a long time. I really care about what's happening here. So I don't know if there's any other questions that might come, come up later, but so far those only, the only, um, things that I have to say about the public comments that I've heard. Um, but I, I'm glad to answer any other questions that the, um, planning commission might have later.
Any question for Laura from the commission while we have her on?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, Mike.
Um, uh, communication for that, uh, commercial operation out there for emergencies and such. What do you have worked out for that? What do you have worked out for that?
Can you hear me? I'm sorry, I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes, go ahead, Laura.
So actually, we are one of the only properties that does have cellphone service. And there are these 10-foot cellphone towers that are brought in for businesses, not like those giants, commercial ones that are for like a whole valley. But there's definitely ways that we're not only going to have internet on the project site, but we're also going to beam down cellphone service because my adjacent property has views right down to the ocean. So we have, we're like the only property that I know of that has cellphone service and reception. So we intend on kind of beaming, triangulating that service right down to that grow site.
Thank you.
Anybody, any other questions? All right, thank you, Laura. All right, with that, I will close the public comment. Oh, go ahead, Ronnie, I'm sorry, I missed.
That's okay, I was just kind of along the lines of the last Maple Creek project. Just curious from Laura if they've pursued any outreach to some of the neighbors in a goodwill gesture and let them know what the project is going to be, how the project was going to be impacting them and what the reception has been.
You still there, Laura?
Oh, yes, I'm still here. So actually, I, most of my adjacent neighbors have applied for permits. So actually, I did not know that the Wilsons lived on the site full-time. And it's kind of hard because, you know, we all have hundreds of acres. It's not like I, and I've been on this property for four years now, living here. This project has taken four years. I feel sad that I have not had a face-to-face interaction with the Wilsons, but as far as my other neighbors concerned, most of them do not live on site. As far as I knew, my nearest like neighbor that actually lived on a property was four miles away. But I, all my other adjacent neighbors are either a logging company to the north of me. I've got another property owner to the south of me that was applying for permits that I see occasionally. But the beauty of the location that we chose is that it's in a nook that is entirely kind of insulated from the road. You can't see the road. You know, they can't see me from the road, they can't see me from across the mountain. And it's tucked away from everything. The landowners that I have an easement on are getting permits. So I think are trying to get permits. I don't know how far they are or what they're doing. But I think we've put in a lot of due diligence, and I wasn't even aware that the Wilsons lived on the property. I guess the only interactions I've had with the Wilsons was like with one of their children in the past and was not a super positive interaction, but it had nothing to do with cannabis. It had to do with trespassing on my property. So actually, I just, I feel bad that I haven't reached out, but also, you know, I don't know what to look for because we live on these giant parcels, so I don't actually know who is who. But I'm more than willing to continue to make amends to like, to show them that we're good people and we're here to stay and like be good neighbors to them. But as far as I know, they were trying to sell and also to get a permit. So I have not reached out beyond that.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Any other questions for Laura before I let her go and bring it back to the commission? Seeing none, I will close the public comment and bring it back to the commission for deliberation. Any discussion about this project? Anybody want to make a motion?
I have something to say.
Go ahead, Brian.
I just wanted to say that I think that it's important on a macro meta level that if we have applicants come before us who have spent years and years and hundreds of thousands of dollars on consultants in order to follow the rules that we, as the county, wrote ourselves, that we either approve their, what they're requesting or give them very specific reasoning as to what part of the rules they didn't meet and potentially try to help them mitigate or modify their project so that they can meet the rules. Because if we don't do that, then we're just not going to have people coming through the application process. We're just going to continue to have people illegally growing without any oversight or without any, you know, care for wildlife or nature. So that being said, I support this project and I appreciate all the work that the applicant has done in order to meet our requirements.
Thank you, Brian. Anybody else?
Sure.
Mike?
It looks like this is a good operations going on here. The only concern I had was about the communications, which the applicant answered there, that there is communication lines for emergencies because that's important when you have people working in the field there, should somebody get hurt or whatever else. And with any fires going on, that it can be reported right away. I see, you know, the catchment here in the ponds, the rainwater, pretty much from their property going into the pond and the tanks, I believe. I'm looking at the area here. It's mixed use, so it's both outdoor and indoor. I see that they have an action plan of, you know, a 64-day cultivation time with three harvest cycles per year. So it will be from mid-April until November. And it looks like the engineering on the road will be done right for getting there. I just see nothing but good stuff here, and I have to agree with Commissioner Mitchell with his comments about we bringing people through this process here with the rules that we've got. I've always said this, and I've put this forth in many different other scenarios as well. It's hard to invest money into something and go by the book and go by what is being required and then have the rug pulled out from you when you're in business and trying to invest and do the right thing. So I like this application. I would vote to approve it, should we have a motion on that.
Anybody else? Oh, Melanie, go ahead. Sometimes I see and sometimes I don't. Go ahead, Melanie. Melanie, are you there?
Oh, yes, thank you, Chair, I am here. Yeah, I also see this project as being a good project. And by that, I mean it's meeting all of our environmental regulations and contributing to the economy, just like the last project. So I would just like to echo what Commissioner Mitchell said. And, you know, we should be looking at these projects through the lens of planning rather than any other. And to that end, I, you know, I'm willing to make a motion to approve this project.
Well, we still have some comments, I think. There's another hand up, but if you want to make a motion, we can have discussion after that. Go ahead.
I can wait, that's fine.
Okay. Who else has their hand up? Noah, go ahead. Noah?
Yeah, I really hear what Commissioner Mitchell just said. I don't disagree with him. I actually have an easier time opposing this project than I did the last one. Because this one is really big, really new, really out there in an area with a really lot of wildlife impacts. There are generators, there are, there's a long road that has to be traveled to do it. I will not, I'm not saying anything bad about the applicants. I guess maybe I'm saying something bad about our process because I don't like to see large new grows like this permitted in a place where they didn't exist before, in relatively pristine landscapes. And I feel like, you know, unlike the previous staff report, I really, I have the highest respect for Cliff Johnson, you know, and the whole department, obviously. But I mean, Cliff is one of the best planners we've got. And I really feel like in the staff report for this one, he laid it out pretty well. He said, yes, we're ticking this box, we're ticking that box, we're ticking the other box. There's a lot of things that are being done really, really in an exemplary fashion on this project. And yet, the net effect, when you step back from it, is that we are permitting a rather expansive grow with not insignificant impacts in a place that has not had that happen before. And again, this is different from remediating a previous grow. And maybe there's some nuances that I'm missing here. But for me, and again, Brian, I don't have a good answer. I mean, you're right, like I don't, and maybe I should be careful what I say because the applicants may appeal. I think that the applicants have done a good job of meeting the requirements of them. But I am not convinced that the totality of the impacts of this project can be or have been mitigated. I just am not, you know, and I guess I need to give a little bit more thought. I would entertain continuing this rather than denying it, okay? Because a lot has gone into this. But I also have a feeling that there's more to the record here than what we have before us.
Five hundred and forty pages, bitch.
What's that?
No, it's not open to public comment anymore, so.
I don't want to just say no absolutely to this, but I actually think that there's, I would really like to see a full explanation from the Department of Fish and Wildlife about what they see as the various impacts of this project and whether they have all been mitigated. I would really like to see, I would really like to hear from the local, you know, the people who are in our regional DFW office about, do you really not have any concerns about the scale of this project in this location? And have all the impacts been mitigated? I need to be convinced. I'm not saying I can't be convinced, but I'm not yet convinced that we can go ahead with this one.
Thank you, Noah. There's another hand up, I don't know who it is. Ronnie, go ahead.
Thank you, Alan. Some of the same, same, you know, concerns as the previous project that was denied. But like I said, I've been to Maple Creek and it is a very special place, and I didn't just go to swimming, you know, it's the elk, the wildlife, the deer, the, I mean, it's a migratory path for elk. It's, like Peggy said at the Samoa Town, when she voted to deny, maybe a good project, but it's not the right location for me.
Seeing no other hands up, I'm going to chime in at the end like I do often. Well, I feel the same way as I did about the last project. We can talk about the road coming in, we can talk about what they did right and they did wrong, but at the end of the day, this all comes down to what Ronnie just said, and it's the wrong location. It's the right project, it's the wrong location. And I would be against this one because of the road going in, how the length of it, the, you know, condition of it, the runoff that's going to be generated on it, and et cetera. I agree with Brian also that there should be concise rules. The problem is, and I've said it from the beginning, I think that the ordinance has been kind of botched. And I can guarantee you with the road issue alone, it is, you've heard me every time talk about it. This is ridiculous what we do. And to be honest, I'm getting frustrated of feeling so stupid that I go along with this ever. I'm pretty, it's pretty disgusting to know what the games that are played on making things happen for these grows. This is the wrong location, you know, it's the right kind of project. There's a lot of money that's been spent, there's a lot of time that's been spent. But bring it in where, you know, where we were sold on doing the cannabis ordinance, and that was to get them out of the hills and get them into the places that were more environmentally friendly. And this is not the place to be put in this kind of a commercial grow. That's my opinion, I'll be voting against it. Anybody else? Well, Melanie wanted to make a motion before, you still want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll give it a shot, even though the feelings seem to be going in another direction. I'll motion to approve Adessa Org- Oh, is it okay?
Yeah.
I'll motion to approve Adessa Organic LLC Conditional Use Permit Application Number 11923, Case Number PLN 11923. Assessor parcel numbers 315145002 and 315211003 and 315211004. 23550 Maple Creek Road.
Okay, thank you. The director liked the comment on this.
Yeah, Commissioner McAvoy, I believe that the motion should also include adopting the mitigated negative declaration and making findings that are contained in the resolution.
Thank you. And adopting the mitigated negative declaration, making the findings of the conclusion that was before us.
Thank you, Melanie, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Of Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead.
Hearing the bits there, I'm, you know, along that same line as well about trying to move grows away from the hills and the mountains and this forest and our pristine wilderness areas that, you know, have been violated with illegal grows. If we're going to change something, it's kind of like the billboard issue from before. If we're going to do that, we need to change the rules. To deny something like this when things are going by the rules, it just doesn't make sense to me. I understand about trying to get the cannabis grows out of the hills and into other areas, but, you know, our other areas would be then some of the dairy lands and some of the other places here that we might hear other reasons why we shouldn't have it there because then they're closer to people and residences and all of that. So, you know, and then we're competing against the valleys that have these big acres of land in order to grow can, in a great motion. Our deal up here in Humboldt is the way of life, and part of it is the way that it is done. So if we're going to change anything, we're going to have to change the rules similar to the billboard issue and not just arbitrarily take something out that should be approved. So that's my thoughts on that, my two cents.
Go ahead, Noah.
Am I unmuted? Sorry. Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I get this. I, I find this a difficult one. And I hate to be petulant, but I actually don't feel that I can vote to approve this without even having seen the referral response from the Department of Fish and Wildlife. I understand that the staff report says that their comments or their recommendations were incorporated into the conditions of approval. I, I, I would really like to have the Department of Fish and Wildlife before us to answer some questions that I have. Some legitimate concerns that I and other people who see this as being a fairly big potential impact to surrounding wildlife have, you know. They're not here and I don't even have their letter. So that's why I, I'm actually hoping that I can, maybe we can continue this till the next meeting. Maybe we can hear it again. But if we don't continue it, I don't think I can bring myself to support it.
So we have a, oh, there's another hand up for, well, I'm going to address this one now. We have a motion and a second on the table. If the maker of the motion would like to, to change that motion and the second go along with it to continue this, that's fine. But we do have a motion on the floor. So I, I want to respect that. And then we have one other hand up. I'm not sure who it is. So Melanie, go ahead, Melanie. Melanie, are you there?
Yes, I was just going to bring that back myself and, and, you know, remind I said there is a motion and a, and a second. And I also just wanted to say, because I, I can't help myself that the billboard as they are now, we were following the regulations in our decision because as it stands it under the law, it is currently illegal. But back to the decision at hand.
Any more discussion? Not, we have a motion. We have a second. I'm going to ask, call for the vote, Laura.
Alan Bongio?
No.
Ronnie Pellegrini? Noah Levy?
I'm going to abstain.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
No.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
I believe.
We're tied.
Three, three tie. So the vote fails. So that means we have to come up with another motion. This might be your chance, Noah.
I move that we continue this application, this project to a date certain, whatever the director recommends, during which we could hear a more detailed summary from the Department of Fish and Wildlife as to their, as to their thoughts on this.
The director has something to say.
Next available meeting would be August 20th, which is the next meeting. That is a fairly large meeting. But we can continue it to that date and see if we can have CDFW in present for that meeting.
Thank you.
So we have a motion to move this, or move this to the next meeting on August 20th.
I, I, I move that we move it to August 20th.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second it.
So we have a motion, a second. I believe that was Peggy. Okay. Any discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote to move.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Ronnie Pellegrini?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman? Mike Newman?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
No.
And Melanie McCaver?
Yes, given that the alternative would, I guess, be to deny the project.
So the motion carries to continue this to the date August 20th, uh, or the next meeting. With that, that concludes our agenda for the night. Does the, the director have any comments or any?
I, I do not have any comments at this time.
I have one question. We, a couple meetings ago, we asked that Public Works addressed some issues on roads and such. Have you had any comment from there or any?
I, I asked Deputy Director Bronkle to come in response to that. He has been on vacation for the last two weeks and so I'm sure he has not had time to prepare for that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions from directors? Commissioners, sorry. Seeing none, we will call this meeting to an end. And as I've been doing, we'll do a phone call to adjourn the meeting.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Ronnie Pellegrini?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
I've had enough meeting tonight. Oh, yes.
You can say.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
And Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Motion carries. We're adjourned. Good night, everyone.